Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee to order. First item on our agenda is the minutes of January 13th. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Are you in on all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item three is for information only. Does anyone have any questions on this?
We have a card on item three.
Oh. We do have a card on item three. Diane? DeeDee, where are you? Oh. I can't even see you.
Good morning. Yes, I just wanted to hear the presentation.
We weren't doing a presentation on it. It's for information only.
Okay, so information in here.
Right.
Okay, we want to say good luck on Valens Transportation Plan.
Okay. Well. Yeah, I think you're looking at the wrong thing, DeeDee.
Isn't that, uh, between Maria, I am public transit, isn't that, uh, no? That's item four.
Are you talking about the new transportation plan? That's item four.
I'm on three and four. I'm at a chairperson and, uh, I just made a comment on three. And it has to with reaching a couple of trends. That's what I'm reading. Am I able to write a judgment?
Right, it's the MAGS report that we, they put out.
And, and item four, I attend those meetings. A Valens plan. Anything Phoenix does need to be reached in.
Thank you. Okay, um, we will go to item four, which is our Citizens Committee on the Future of Phoenix Transportation Recommendations.
Madam's, go ahead.
I just want to thank the committee. I know you have put in many hours and this has been an adventure. And I just want to thank you for your patience, your guidance, and your leadership. So, thank you.
Madam Chairperson, thank you so much. Let me make sure I'm on, I'm on here. Thank you so much. And I often equate doing this to having a baby. And there's some pretty tough times going through it, but the second, second you get the child at the end, you forget everything about, about how hard it was. So, we enjoyed doing it and certainly appreciate the opportunity and the opportunity to present the plan to you today as the committee has approved. I want to talk a little bit about why we needed kind of a successor plan here, what the situation was prior to Transit 2000, then what has happened as a result of Transit 2000, and what we need to look at in the future. And I have two relatives who really depended on public transportation back in, in the 1990s or so before this. And as indicated, no Sunday or holiday service, limited Saturday service, no late night service, no light rail, no rapid transit, and only one neighborhood circulator. And I remember my father-in-law, who lived with us in North Phoenix toward the end of his life, when we had to take his car and his license away from him, his driver's license away from him. And I was at ADOT at the time, so I really did take his license away from him in more ways than one.
Oh.
It was so hard for him because he couldn't any longer go visit his friends and have coffee in the morning and do things like that. Or my brother, who became disabled in the early 1990s, also was just very limited. If we had a family event, we always had to plan for someone to go get him and, and take him back to where he was living at the time because there just weren't transit options on Sundays, on holidays as well. So, we certainly have made some great progress between now and then. Light rail's been a huge success. We've almost reached our 20-year ridership projections after only six years here in the valley with the transportation system. And Super Bowl, congratulations to the, the committee member, the council members, and the mayor, and everyone who contributed to Super Bowl. What a great, great success. And during the Super Bowl, light rail carried twice as many passengers as our previous high day, or the previous high day of 126,000 passengers. That's amazing. I will confess, I didn't get, go down and get into the crowd, but I saw the pictures on the news of standing room only on the transit vehicles as they went through. So, that, that was tremendous. And considering that before 2000, we didn't even have Sunday service in Phoenix, you carry more than 45,000 people on the transit system every Sunday today. So, some tremendous progress has been made. However, Transit 2000 and the implementation, because of the incidence of several severe recessions between then and now, I'm sorry, let me get into slides here. There, the funding hasn't come into the level that we anticipated it to. The long-term objectives of Transit 2000 were hampered by declines in revenue during those two recession, recessionary periods that our state and our country have experienced. To date, the, the plan has generated approximately $1 billion less in revenue than was anticipated. And at the same time, funding for street transportation issues and maintenance have also declined as longstanding sources for supportive roadway construction, such as the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund have declined. And I certainly saw those reductions on a federal level as well. Significant declines in the federal availability of gas taxes also. So, as indicated on the slide, there's a shortfall of a little over $1 billion between what had been, been projected to be brought in with the revenue increase in Transit 2000 and what actually was delivered.
Councilman Gates has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question here. So, is that the, that's the estimate of at the end of the 20 years, what T-2000 will generate? What it, what it was estimated to generate and what it will actually, not current date, not through current date, but actually through the 20 years?
Correct. And I want to make sure, yes, I want to look at staff, make sure I am saying that correctly. Yes, that is projected through the termination of Transit 2000.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. The original Transit 2000 sales tax, and this chart gives you the projected versus the actuals on a year-to-year basis, so you can see when the decline occurred in the '07, '08 timeframe and how that has continued to date. So, obviously, we didn't have as much money as we had hoped to have. Therefore, you as council members, as well as the mayor, decided to appoint a committee to look at this and look at what the future of the transportation system here in the city should be. And listed on, on the slide here, I'm sorry, are, are the commission members, had a great group of members, 34 members in total, to provide a comprehensive review of public transit and street transportation needs, citywide rather, and to gather resident input. And we'll talk a little bit about that resident input in just a few moments, but we really had tremendous, tremendous input from residents and citizens of the city, and we were very, very grateful to get that. Over our 11 meetings, the committee analyzed the transportation landscape of each area of the city. So, we initially looked at that, central, west, north, east, south, and looked at those components of the city in each of those areas. We looked at land use and census data. We considered current public transit and transportation infrastructure and how it was meeting needs and where the gaps were between current delivery and current needs. We looked at how to connect major destinations. That seen, and certainly the Super Bowl, I think, indicated the success of doing that when you have a major destination there. And also, public input to identify the city's future transportation needs as well. TalkTransportation.org was tremendously helpful in terms of getting that input. Today, folks aren't always want to go to a public meeting at 7:00 PM at, at night. And even though there were a number of those, and we did get good turnout at those, there are a lot of people who just don't come to those meetings, so the ability to comment online was just tremendous. We held over 100 meetings, over 37,000, or 3,700 residents engaged, over 1,500 online responses, 600 in-person comments, and then in partnership with ASU, there was a Student Outreach Assistance Workshop. And we also met with transit providers, the, the drivers, the folks who take care of the transit system as well, at their place of work so we could get their input into this plan as well. Some common themes that came out from that public input. Changes or improvements to rail, bus rapid transit, and streetcar service were needed, were necessary according to those who responded. On buses, service changes or improvements to local bus routes and hours. More routes were consistency, that's what the citizens told us they were looking for. Complete streets, building infrastructure so that we can create shade, ADA accessibility, bike lanes, better walkability, and pavement improvements. And on this issue, it, it really drove home to us on the committee that people just don't drop out of the air at a bus stop or a train station. They have to get there. And in many cases, they have to get there through other modes of transportation as well. So, walking, biking, park-and-rides, things like that were very important in terms of increasing ridership and getting people using the system. Technology. The, the new generation absolutely told us that Wi-Fi, electronic fair media, digital signage, and fuel technology were all important in terms of what our recommendations would show. And then funding, varied funding options and partnerships were emphasized by the public and a number of our committee members as well. We had some very good input on that. This is what we recommend at the end of the day. The Citizens Committee recommends replacement of the city's current transit tax with a transportation tax. We're recommending a .75% tax, which is estimated to bring in a little over $30 billion over a 30-year period of time. The proposed sales tax increase was permanent but not less than 30 years. Some members, because we heard this from the public, surprisingly and overwhelmingly, surprising to me at least, the public indicated a permanent tax. But we, we felt that we needed to have some options as we talked through our recommendations at the committee. So, again, we're recommending here, permanent but not less than 30 years of a tax. And the 30 years is really important in terms of bondability and the ability to build quickly should this pass at the ballot and should you approve it. I guess I should put that, that step in there first. And then a formation of a Combined Transit and Streets Committee to oversee expenditures and to address future innovative financing and funding mechanisms. Several members on the committee talked about changes that are occurring. What if we have driverless cars? What if we have automated vehicles? In the future, would that change what the recommendations are? And because you as council members will know that and, and will have to be responding to those changes in technology and things like that over this period of time, we felt that there should be a committee that, ongoing and that would advise you and give you the flexibility to reduce the tax based on additional revenue sources. Now, that's, that's a tough one to say, of course, because I'm having spent a good deal of time in Washington with members of Congress on the federal gas tax, and it hasn't been increased since 1993. The state hasn't been increased since 1991. So, I don't expect that there's a gas fairy going to drop out of the sky and, and approve something in the immediate term. But should they do that, or should other sources of revenue become available? We felt that you needed the flexibility. But also, the committee felt very strongly that the mayor and council should consider solutions to address the $3.5 billion in unfunded street and stormwater infrastructure needs as well. And this was very, very important to several members of our committee, and perhaps they, they would have pushed a little harder than where we did in some of those areas. I, speaking for myself and not necessarily all the members of the committee, one of the things that, that I felt is there are additional revenue sources available for street and stormwater that aren't available for transit. And we also felt that we didn't want to recommend anything to you that wasn't within your purview of authority to approve at the end of the day. For example, we, we could have said, increase the state gas tax, but that would have to go through the state legislature. That's not something you could do on your own. Or increase the vehicle license tax, bring that funding in. Some of those areas, we, we do want to be looked at in the future, but it wasn't something that you could immediately implement absent some effort from the state, unless, of course, we moved the Dillon's rule instead of Home Rule, and that could change, but that would also take state legislative action to make that happen as well. So, in this slide, the, the picture here is the high, the city high-capacity transit. What we're proposing is 125 new miles of light rail, streetcar, or bus rapid transit throughout the city. And I believe you have these in front of you, the maps in, in front of you as well. In bus service, new routes, expanded routes, increased frequency, increased hours of operation. This, again, responding to what the public told us that they thought was very important in terms of the bus routes. And then in terms of street improvements, our recommendation would provide $2.4 billion toward a $7 billion, 30-year streets infrastructure needs. More than double the current funding for pavement and overlays. $280 million for major transportation projects, new roads, bridges, street modernization. Implementation funding for the bicycle master plan projects. And complete street implementation in major transit corridors. Complete streets is what gives us that accessibility that I talked about earlier, and also just makes the city more walkable, more enjoyable, bike, pet activities throughout the city as well. So, complete streets was something that we felt was very, very important. The 1.478 specifically for improving street accessibility and connectivity to the transit corridors was, again, an important part of our recommendation. $944 million in major maintenance, which increases by 50%. Major transportation projects increased by 30%. Mobility improvements by 15%. And technology enhancements by 5%.
Question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question on the more than double the current funding for pavement overlays. So, what would that number be? Do, do we have that?
I'm going to ask Ray DeValena to answer that question. And the overlay.
And in conjunction with that, does that take it from our 65 years to 30?
Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, currently, the, the current budget that we have is roughly within 22 million to 25 million. So, this would increase it doubling that to around 50 million. With regards to the question about decreasing the lifecycle, considerably, it'll get, get decreased, but we would have to analyze that and see how we can considerably reduce that. At this time, we haven't made that analysis to how, how far down we can reduce the lifecycle of that. But certainly, it's going to be less than what we're doing right now.
What we're doing right now is outrageous, so.
And just to clarify, so that 2.4 billion, so we currently, and we've talked, we'll be talking later about this, about the Street CIP, we currently have about $2 billion in projected funding over that 30 years from projected, mostly Arizona Highway User Revenue money. Some also comes from our telecommunications assessments that happen when people are using the ride-of-way. So, that 2.4 billion more than doubles that $2 billion. But as the committee identified, there's still a little bit of a gap to get all the way to the $7 billion in needs over the next 30 years. But we have other mechanisms to get, to get to those, as the chair pointed out.
And for example, Chair, Chair Williams and council member, we also talked about the state legislature not rating transportation tax funds or not rating the Highway User Revenue Fund here in the state for other purposes, but maybe continuing that dedicated revenue source toward transportation that, that, again, would provide more benefits toward the street transportation. At this point in time, I'd, I'd like to turn over to my, to my two co-chairs, who very ably helped me, Marty Schultz and Maria Byer. Marty's going to take the presentation now and to the end, and then we would all be pleased to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Thanks much. I know it was interesting when I heard, thanks for doing this. Actually, this talented crew and the people that were on, that you selected to be on this commission have really spent years, years, in some cases, decades and decades in advocating for transportation around Phoenix, this region, and Arizona. And in that regard, before we go any further, I noticed that a number of our commissioners did come in. So, if you don't mind, could we ask those commissioners to stand up and be recognized? Those that were on the commission, still are on the commission, by the way. You're not off the hook. Thank you very much. Many others, and we didn't ask everybody to show up today, but that, that's part of it. I, I think that it's amazing that we're able to express the recommendations in summary fashion because I can assure you that the committee and the staff grappled with a great number of details in terms of how various sources of fundings are integrated into the summary. So, when you see the summary of these recommendations, there's much detail behind them. Now, when you look at the routes, you see a map and you see some detail as far as the major corridors are concerned, either with bus rapid, bus service, or light rail expansion. Interestingly enough, there's a lot more detail in terms of the overarching plan that at some point, if somebody wants to talk through that detail, we're prepared to do. Also, because this is complex, we identified some policy issues which are noted up there. And, and I'd like to go through them. And the reason we want to go through these policy issues is because this is an ongoing process, even though we're making our recommendation to you today to move forward to the city council. Our work and your work, of course, is, is not done in this area of infrastructure improvement. It's really never done. But let's take financing initially. The need to further research and identify and advocate for multiple purposes, multiple financing methods, including public-private partnerships, value-added venture capital, tax increment financing or variations that would be allowed by the state of Arizona, toll roads, shadow tolls, and various other improvement districts. And that's just a starter set of financing we believe is necessary in Phoenix, and I would comment throughout the state of Arizona. We can't just rely on one source of taxation. An oversimplified approach will not work. And as the secretary mentioned, she didn't say it just like this, but she doesn't, she didn't demonstrate a whole lot of faith that Washington was going to drop big bucks on us. I think she said, she said it very tactfully. And so, I've got to compliment the mayor and council and the Citizens Commission, and hopefully, the supporters of this effort. We understand that we have to take charge of our own fate in terms of infrastructure, and this is really what we're doing. Competition, the emphasis for competition for services and maintenance is desired to obtain the best value with limited resources, we think. Integrating that into the overarching plan of financing, design, and ultimately, construction is extremely important. Regional connectivity, the committee believed that it was important to continue working with the region to identify connections which are essential to the economic viability of our larger community. At the end of this, I'll have something to say about why we believe it's a very positive view for Phoenix to take this step at this time. Accessibility, the committee believes that continued focus on accessibility to the transportation network is critical, including additional light rail stations at key locations such as the 48th Street Safe, identified, safe, accessible sidewalks, bike paths, improved dial ride, especially relating to regional connectivity. All part of the overall program. Funding, topics that would be included in discussion about additional funding sources other than sales tax, such as gas tax, indicating, indexing the vehicle license tax, and the property tax, also need to be ultimately on the, on the table for further concentration. That's why we recommend that the commission to you to make this an ongoing, and Mary mentioned this, to make this an ongoing effort. Committee members also delved into some of the staff assumptions and sales tax growth rates based on the difficulty in projecting future growth rates, with several members recommending conservative, that would be 1% to 3% annual growth projections, instead of the point, 4.75 growth rate used by staff in their estimates. The recommendation, the recommended comprehensive transportation plans provides for $2.4 billion in new funding for streets, transportation needs, but as was discussed a few moments ago, leaves the deficit of $3.5 billion over a 30-year period. The committee believed that finding alternative funding for this deficit was very important and doable. Economic development, you know, in one short set of comments, we can't overstate that transportation and economic development go hand in hand, and we felt that the additional work and coordination was required to maximize the city's investment in transportation. The need for revitalization of existing and especially low-income neighborhoods around current and future transit was highlighted. There, there is, there are quotes around the region about the first 20 miles from T-2000 stimulating $7 billion in investment. I can tell you from some real estate projects I've been involved in and activities through the Urban Land Institute and other areas that, that I practice in around town, people who are making those investments, the people who are in the industry are very bullish on light rail, bus rapid, and the transit system that has been implemented and is being recommended. And these are the people that ultimately make the investment decisions. And at some future time, I'd like to name names because I'm pretty impressed with those developer leaders who see the coordination in this area. And then finally, and this is sort of last but clearly not least, is the discussion about technology. They were discussed during a number of our policy discussions, and we discussed alternative transportation methods which may reduce reliance on public transit. These alternative transportation methods included increase in services such as Uber and Lyft, and emerging autonomous vehicle technologies, which are scary to some, as I discussed with my wife how this was going to all work out, driverless cars. But I do think that we have to recognize that these technologies will ultimately be incorporated into our overall system, and I think policymakers are well advised to do Reiterating the Citizens Committee recommendations, our recommendation is the .75% tax, which is estimated to bring in $30.5 billion over 30 years. Proposed sales tax increase is permanent but not less than 30 years. That's been previously mentioned. It is important to note that this program of investment, the budget, if you will, is predicated on the 30 years. Formation of a Combined Transit and Streets Committee to oversee expenditures and address future innovative financing and funding mechanisms, we think is really important. I would think in our recommendations, that would be a role of the mayor and council. And I know that members of, and I'm not speaking for all of them, but members of this commission would be willing to either help or participate and bring their knowledge to that effort. Also, we need to allow a city council flexibility to reduce the tax based on additional revenue sources. That was also part of the recommendations, and you can deal with that as you, as you feel necessary. I, you know, we could go into more detail if that's necessary. Finally, transformation of Phoenix. What this recommendation would do is triple the current light rail miles. I, I think that is worth repeating. Triple the current light rail miles. That doesn't happen in an instant, but the older one gets, the older one realizes that time is moving quickly, and moving now on this recommendation and moving swiftly after, hopefully, voters approve this, will actually make a significant difference in, in this city. Light rail return on investment, $40 billion. That has been documented. And when people get into a debate on that, I, I look at it like this, plus or minus 10%, because that's really what it's all about, plus or minus 10%. The baseline figure is $40 billion. Huge investment and a huge return on the investment. Increased bus service frequency by 70%. Clearly, our city has turned the corner and understands how bus is integrated into the fabric of this community and how it is important for a lot of reasons and at all levels. Span of service is increased by 20%. And the ADA dial ride service is increased by 20%. And then, the great question, because I personally believe, and I suspect that this group in front of you and others believe in the principle of enlightened self-interest.
I like that one.
Enlightened self-interest. What will this plan do for me? And I, and I, I can't imagine a more ideal circumstance than of people being offered choices in transportation, very necessary. Breathing easier, there is a significant air quality component. Safety has also been integrated into this financing plan. Traffic relief, better economy. The word better probably should be changed off, or I think significantly better economy. Connectivity, simple word, huge concept, very important in our society that, in spite of the size of Phoenix, is more connected and needs to be even more connected in order for us to continue the lifestyle that we believe in. Saves money. It clearly is a job generator. And by the way, it is not just a job generator from a construction standpoint. If you talk, and I'm sure you do, to the relocation services, you may have talked to some executives during Super Bowl, I suspect you did, a lot of us had that opportunity. And they were very impressed with the light rail system as it is now, with the prospects for improved light rail and connectivity through an improved bus service. And finally, the passenger experience, which is different than just being in our car, is really unique, and I mean, unique. Some people, it's relaxing; to some people, it's fun, but it definitely is an interesting and great experience. So, the future bus service, 70% COP service will have peak frequency of at least 15 minutes, and 100% of weekend service will have 30-minute frequency at a minimum over the 30 years. Mary mentioned the TalkTransportation.org, and I'd just like to finish by saying, reaching out, and this was a great suggestion and a great program, reaching out to a larger audience through social media, if you will, made a lot of difference. I attended a public hearing, and, you know, that was not dissimilar to public hearings I've been attending for a few decades. But reaching out and getting the kinds of comments But reaching out and getting the kinds of comments we did is huge. One last thing about Phoenix leadership. Having observed this for many, many years, some people are going to say, well, where was that regional plan? Where was that statewide plan of transportation? And the answer is, it's not here now. So, Phoenix, making this move forward, carrying these recommendations to the council and ultimately to the voters, I think will be the exact right stimulus for the discussion about what's beyond these recommendations and ultimately these investments. Because you as councilpeople, as omnipotent and powerful as you are, are only powerful within the boundaries of the city of Phoenix. And it will take others in this region and others beyond this region at the state level to help us achieve what we need to in the way of a comprehensive transportation program statewide. But this is the great next step, so we really are honored to be part of this.
Maria, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mary, and thanks, Marty. Good morning. I think the recommendations and largely the discussion that we had as a committee has been ably described. The only thing that I would say is thank you to the staff, they were excellent, they responded to all the requests that the committee members made, so I felt like we had all the information that we needed to have to have a full and fair debate on these issues. And I will say that in my opinion, it was one of the fullest and fairest debates I've been a part of. So I appreciated the thoughtfulness that all of you, the council and mayor, put into, to inviting people to serve on this committee, because I felt like we did have a good discussion, you know? And I thought a centerpiece of that discussion was making sure that Phoenix remains competitive on both sides, making sure that we have the transportation that we need to have to remain competitive as a municipality, but also competitive in terms of what our taxpayers are able to pay. So all of that also went into it, and I think that's very important as you go forward in making your determination, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Williams. Thank you again. We so appreciate and honored by the opportunity to have served you on this committee, and again, I appreciate the involvement of all the committee members. And certainly we'd be available to answer your questions or to move forward. More detail is included in several documents that you have in front of you. This is what we term Schedule A, which is the detail about the various transit and street transportation improvements, as well as the two maps that I discussed earlier. And I'm sorry for interrupting you, Chair Williams, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I do have some cards, and I thought, how about I invite the cards up and we'll see where that leads us, and I know we have some questions, so. Steve Banta?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. First and foremost, first and foremost, I'd like to say I am 100% behind this, but I do have some comments I'd like to make. And I want to be sensitive to the committee, they worked very, very hard, and particularly the Phoenix Transit, Public Transit staff. They were responsive, as the chairs said, and I think we've got a very good start. What I would like to comment on is when we say things like long-term, stable, reliable, solid commitment, those are the things that the private sector and the federal government want to hear when they're thinking about local transit tax initiatives or local resources as it relates to these large infrastructure projects. Particularly the private sector side, when we think about, and we mentioned that up in item number three, innovative project delivery, funding and financing options, the private sector wants to know if they invest early in one of your projects, one of your infrastructure projects, that there is a solid commitment to have a stable, reliable resource for the city to rely on to pay that investment back. When you include words like flexibility, potential modification, adjustments to the tax rate, it lends itself to maybe being inconsistent with what they're looking for to make their investments. All of us want to know, when we invest our time and our money, it's for something that's going to pan out 30 years from now. These projects last 30 years, they're in operation for that long, we need long-term commitments, and I would suggest that we think about removing the flexibility, item number four, completely, and understand that there is a strong, bold commitment from the city of Phoenix to move forward with transit and transportation infrastructure here in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Walt Gray?
Hi, Mary. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think this is the right time to do this. I don't think it's the right time, you know, I hate disagreeing with Mary and Marty. Mary was a mentor of mine at the ADOT. But there's several things that I see wrong with the program as a sense. It's all documented, it's, you know, I'm sure it's all well put together, but there's some basic differences that I have. One, and I'm with the West Side Town Hall Steering Committee, we're a low-income group, so we're, we're interested in the little guy, and we don't see the little guy in this. We think the economic development plan has, should go first for the city of Phoenix, for example. This program leads all traffic to downtown, just like the freeways and light rail. We don't think that's right. We have economic, there's two employment centers on the west side, that traffic is directed downtown, those employment centers are undeveloped, those employment centers would change the traffic flow from the west side, north-south rather than east-west. So I think we should move forward, economic development plan, that's what we need most, an economic development plan, and then put that plan onto this transit, transportation plan, and then modify it. Because we're not, we're not taking, you know, I was at a public hearing, and I know they got a few thousand people here, but we got millions of people in Phoenix. And in the public hearing I was at, low-income people are unhappy with the way they are being treated by the city of Phoenix and the county and the state and everybody else. They, they're simply just not, there's not enough concern for them or economic development for them. This is economic development for downtown. And economic, and there's no tax on downtown. And the sales tax, we paid the sales tax for freeways, for light rail, now for this program. We paid for state government, we paid for county government, we paid for city government, all sales tax. And that's a regressive tax, and we should have a more progressive, and Marty mentioned maybe the property tax, that would be more, or a district tax on downtown, they benefit so much, the property values of downtown will go sky-high. I think it should be a 20-year program rather than a 30-year program, or a permanent tax, my God. A 20-year program puts more public control, and that's what we need, we don't need just the city council control or the special task force, we need public control. And, you know, when this thing was presented to the public hearings, the public meetings, it was largely an up and down vote, you know? You presented the plan, and it presented in a very positive way, and not an opportunity to really discuss the plan or ask questions, or no options were offered. Do you want a 20-year tax, a 30-year tax, a 40-year tax? No options. And, well, I'll stop at that, thank you.
Thank you. Diane Barker?
Thank you, Chair Williams and committee, Diane Barker. And I think Walt has some concerns, and I do want to say, from knowing these individuals, Marty Schultz and Mary Peters out of High Line People are some of the most accessible persons. And I need to say that because they deal in big issues that are going to cost us a lot of money, but I think on a personal basis, they are accessible. Now, I've attended some of these meetings, and I've been able to speak, but the public input, I believe, has pretty much been directed to a perceived outcome. And what you see is the expansion of a lot of at-grade rail. I have thought, you know, if you look at some of the questions, they give you selections, okay, so you're participating, but you know, here are the elements in which one would you choose, and it goes on to future Bus Rapid. Now, this committee did come up with the fact that most of the people that are using transit are walking to transit. We need to realize who really is using transit. I know, I enjoyed the special event, I thought it worked marvelously with the Super Bowl, but we're not going to have a Super Bowl every time. We're struggling to find ways that we can bring families downtown, just not for Beer Garden, that's fun too. But what we need is to have a viable center downtown, we need to activate small businesses, Walt's right about that. Maybe someday, close down Central Avenue and have it a corridor, Mercantile Corridor, small businesses, light rail at grade creates accidents, and when there's an accident, the traffic gets stopped, then we have a serious pollution problem with particulates, we must take that in consideration, and we're not getting any help from our friend Andy Knesset, because he's the only person, he told me, that rides the bus to the airport. We need a big vision for multi-modal transportation. Yay, Phoenix, you're going out bold, but be prepared to have this amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard May?
Good morning, Madam Chair and the members of the committee. You see me a lot at these meetings, advocating, for those of us who don't see as well. I went to a few of the meetings myself, but due to the lateness of the meetings, I was not able to attend all of them. If you continue on the meetings, you should have at least one meeting during the day on a Saturday or something to help out other people, like the, you know, low-income and whatnot, so they can get out to the meetings. There was a lot of stuff I was happy to see in the packet, and there's a few things that were carried over from the old regional transit plan. However, I do think there's a few items that should be put in the short-term phase and brought, accelerated forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Smith?
Which way should I be facing? No, that's okay, that's okay. Which way should I be facing?
You're fine.
Okay. All right, because I got the audience behind me, I got the board in front of me, and they're both equally important, so. But I do want to address the board here. Really appreciate, you know, the effort that the commission has gone through in putting together priorities. I know how difficult it is, setting priorities and then making budgets fit within those priorities. I would like to see a more balanced budget and not a gap there, because things can happen, and expenses can be greater than what one anticipates, and revenue can fall short, as we know. When it comes to the outlay of expenses, I have a few comments. Increasing the bus service by 70% over the next 30 years, if you do the math, that's less than a 2.5% per year growth, that's just barely keeping up with the population growth expected. So that means that per inhabitant, it's no improvement over what we've got right now. That's a problem. And although increasing frequency is absolutely important, your 70% expansion probably would not allow for increasing the hours of coverage or the area of coverage. With the latest changes that came through in the bus service, it was really interesting to see that there were almost just as many scale downs of service as there were service additions. And that's what you're going to find yourself in if you're only going to increase bus service by 70% over three years. And then, light rail, increasing, I mean, excuse me, dial-ride, increasing only 20% over 30 years, that means that's not even 1% improvement per year. So one could expect per inhabitant a service reduction, we're already way behind on dial-ride and where the service should be, and I don't need to get into details on that. So what can you scale back on? Because I know we've got to make the budget balance, and that was, I would say on the, my mic is gone, so, sorry about that, that the light rail improvements of 120 miles should be really reconsidered and maybe scaled down to just where it really adds the most bang for the buck. There's a lot of business detriment that comes with putting in light rails, a lot of businesses fail along the light rail. It should really be limited to just those corridors where the traffic intensity and just ridership would be the greatest. That's difficult for a city that's not planned very well, where there's work centers and population centers scattered all over the place, and people aren't just going from the outskirts into a central location like in other big cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Miller?
First, I'd like to express my thanks for the opportunity to serve on this commission. We started out as a commission, and then I think we got demoted to a committee, but I noticed in the report here, we're back to being commissioners again, so it sounds a lot more important. My basic concern with the report is that I think it has too much emphasis on bus and light rail and transit-related street improvements. This was a discussion several times in the meetings, and the, and one result was the appointment of a separate subcommittee to discuss non-transit-related street improvements. And actually, I don't think that emphasis was reflected in our final vote. Part of the reason for that is that we did not see the recommendation when we voted on it, and our final meeting was actually done over the phone, and I think if we hadn't done that, the non-transit-related street improvements would have received a higher recommendation. Also, I think that part of the reason that the report didn't properly reflect the views of the committee is that we had so much time spent on staff presentation that it allowed little time for debate, and there was actually no voting at all until the final meeting. So we didn't vote on anything until the final meeting, and what we did vote on, we didn't see. So I think in the future, that process should be changed. What that resulted in, in my mind, is also a lack of consideration of cost-benefit analysis. I think that needed a lot more attention. And even more important than that, the attention on a tax increase. Some of us are very much opposed to tax increases, and especially at a time when, for example, I believe we're down at least 300 police officers, to be raising taxes to build trains and buses is not a good idea. And finally, the TalkTransportation process, I do not feel allowed for a diverse input. It was, as one commenter earlier mentioned, it was too structured to focus people on the bus and light rail program that I believe was kind of the vision of the commission or committee when it was created. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have, was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Do you want to come up and name an address for the record, please?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, council members. My name is Greg Walker, and most importantly, a citizen of Phoenix, but also 20-plus-year transit planning professional, worked in regional transit agencies in Denver, where I started, in DC, in Portland, Oregon, and Seattle, most recently, before moving to Phoenix. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the access component. I was asked a couple of years ago, after I had moved here, the transit agency there, how is Phoenix doing so well? Because Phoenix ridership on the light rail is just light-years ahead of Seattle or Denver, and it's about accessibility. Seattle and Denver systems were built for speed, which is important to reach the suburbs, but that means stations are much further apart, and they're much harder to get to unless you have a car. Phoenix was built with stations much closer together, it's a slower speed, but the accessibility is critical to the success of the system. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Williams. I had not planned on speaking. Reed Butler, Butler Housing Company. But Marty's comment about tripling light rail got me all fired up here. This is so important to the multifamily housing industry. Denver, that you mentioned, has 75 miles of light rail. Denver has 75 miles of light rail with, what, half the population of Metro Phoenix? I think that's what it is, that kind of a number. In addition, we haven't yet seen the impact on light rail ridership of apartment development. Remember, we opened in December of '08. We then had six years of, boy, tough to finance anything for about a six-year period. We're now finally starting to see multifamily development, mainstream apartment developers come to light rail, 3,000 apartments downtown, 12 different projects. So to me, what we're going to start to see over the next year, two years, is the impact of high-quality apartment development, condominium development near our stations, which to me pushes the ridership up even more. So to me, the emphasis of the commission, and Marty, Mary, Maria, appreciate all your work, is extremely important to the multifamily housing industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reed. Last call, anyone else?
Thank you. I'll try and make this, can you hear me?
Yes. Your name and address for the record, please?
Sonia Pastor La Sota, 303 West Stella Lane. I am a member of the commission and a citizen of Phoenix, and thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you, Councilwoman Gallegos, to allow me the opportunity to serve on this commission. With all due respect to Mr. Miller's comments, I just wanted to make sure to take the opportunity to explain to you all that we were given the opportunity to review all of the recommendations. Exhibit 8A, excuse me, specifically, was emailed to all of us several times, along with several attachments. As you all know, we, staff spends a lot of time on these reports, and we all had the opportunity to review them. We also spent an entire Saturday in which all of us were, offered the opportunity to review all of these, actually, we came up with these recommendations as a result of our Saturday workshop. And it was a very productive day, while I would have liked to spend my Saturday elsewhere. It was a very productive day.
And we thank you for that.
And all of the, we were broken down, and I know this is more information you want to know, but I just feel the need to explain this to you, that we were all offered an opportunity to break down into smaller groups, and all of our groups were representative, had different representatives of the commission. So there were some healthy debates in all of those small groups, mine included. So I just, as a committee member, or excuse me, commission member, just wanted to clarify that I do believe that we were given the opportunity to, number one, come up with these recommendations, these are our recommendations. Secondly, have the opportunity to review them, and thirdly, I am confident in saying that we voted on these. Of course, there were folks on the commission who did not agree with the recommendations, but as a whole, we did agree on the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will ask councilmembers, do you have questions? I know I have some, but.
Oops. We'll let your chairwoman go first.
Oh, okay. Well, there you are. When you estimated the cost of these, what did you base the cost on?
And I'm going to actually defer to Ken Kessler, who is our deputy over our financial area, and he is the best at this.
And also how you come up with the growth rate, because they're kind of connected.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second question?
How you determine the growth rate, your estimating growth rate?
Okay. So, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, the costs were basically estimated on current costs inflated over the 30 years. So that's how we determine those costs. The growth rate and the revenue was based on the, kind of the ADAD forecast and historical growth rates. So that's how we came up with the growth rate for the sales tax specifically.
And it was what, 4.5?
4.75.
And, Madam Chair, let me, let me add a little bit to that. So we actually do have a cash flow analysis of all of these items. So you can't build them all in one year. So we have factored that in, so that we've captured that cost based on the year of expenditure of each one of the elements within the Exhibit A. So that is factored in. There's also an inflation cost within, for costs, and I believe it's 4%.
That's correct.
Annually, based on that, as well as we have a contingency balance built in. So these were things that we learned out of the Transit 2000 process, things that were not included in the original Transit 2000 plan, lessons learned. So for us, we wanted to make sure that we were being conservative in our numbers and making sure that we captured inflation as well as a contingency, so that we would have a healthy fund balance at the end of the 30-year, based on what we know. And so this plan does factor in, it does factor in recessions. So we have that in. What we don't, you know, although I will caution you though, is that we have not, a typical recession is what we saw at the beginning of the plan. So that's in 2001, 2002. We do have those planned into our 30-year cash projections. However, a great recession like we saw in 2007 and '08, we believed was not typical. And so something like that may have an impact if there is another one during this 30-year period. But for the most part, we felt that we were putting together a conservative plan that took into consideration what our sales tax growth has been minus the Great Recession, as well as what we anticipate for the future.
I, I'm just, was very concerned about that, because T2000, we were off a lot, and this is a very ambitious plan, and I wanted to make sure that we were looking at this in, under a different microscope this time. I have a couple other questions when it comes to the complete streets. Because as you know, that's, I'm a lover, believe in light rail and better bus service, but I am so concerned about the condition of our streets. And I support doing complete streets, especially along the transit lines. I think that's essential to do that. If you're going to be rebuilding a street and putting in the light rail, then we should do it right, right in the beginning, and have everything there. But it's the streets that are not near transit lines that I'm very concerned about. And I, I think the amount that you've recommended here is woefully underfunded. I know that you think that you're going to get additional revenue from other sources. I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but I don't buy it. I think we were lucky if we'll keep the same percentages from the gas tax. I don't see the state raising it. Usually, they divert money from us, and I'm very concerned about how we're going to maintain them, because they are falling apart, not only the arterials, but in the neighborhoods themselves. There are holes in the streets. And we're currently on, what, 65-year repair cycle?
Yes.
Well, come on. And if you just cut this 30, cut it in half, that's still a 30-year repair plan. And you've got too many streets out there right now that need it tomorrow. They cannot wait for a week or years. So I am wondering if there is a way that you could divert some of this other money and consider putting more money into this. I, I don't know. I also question on Camelback Phase 2, does that include money from Glendale? Doesn't Glendale have a large portion of this area?
Madam Chair, yes, you are correct. The numbers that are included in our plan are Phoenix-only. Glendale would provide their own share in our assumptions.
So we're doing half the street?
Yeah.
How does that work?
So it's the mileage within Phoenix only, so not the miles in Glendale.
So it's, no, I don't get it. Five miles worth, is that what you're saying? 43rd to 83rd.
Then how do we have a regional plan and develop connectivity with other cities?
So, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, let me clarify. So what we have included is the total miles of that potential extension. However, the funding amount is only for Phoenix's portion of it. So we did apply in the connectivity to another city. However, we've only calculated the dollar amount to include Phoenix's, the portion within the city of Phoenix.
So based on that, Glendale would approximately have to come up with the same amount?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay.
Or the other, the other alternative is through regional, regional funds as well.
Right, regional funding, whatever.
You know, one of the things that...
Non-Phoenix is what I'm getting at.
Right. And one of the things that happens in this process is, you know, Glendale's going to have a lot to say in the future about where things happen in their community, and it's very possible that after a certain point, they may want to see it go north sooner, as an example. So obviously, we're not going to pay with our local taxes for miles of light rail within another city. That would have to come from Glendale or regional, but we would, you know, we cooperate, as you know, being on the regional light rail and bus-related boards, we cooperate very closely with them in the planning of these things. So if, as we're going through alternatives analysis of the actual alignment of the, of the rail itself, it could end up looking different than it is on this map, once you get out to that, that point. And, and that's something we'd have to, you know, work on with you all, with the future council, and with, with the city of Glendale and the region.
I, I just want to go back to making my point about the streets. I'm very concerned about recommendation number four, based on additional revenue sources. Streets needs additional revenue sources, and I think it is so necessary and so, such a drastic need, that I am very, pardon me, very concerned about even having that in there. I, I think it isn't in our best interest. I think that between, if we have the commission and the council members, we can always slow things down. I mean, there, there are options for us. But having that written and passed by the voters really ties our hands in many ways, and I have great concerns about it, because I know citizens have a lot of concerns out there. I am excited for this to go forward. I still have a couple more questions, but I think Phoenix needs to be the leader. We were in the beginning. We have been for the state forever, and I, we will never have a regional transportation. We will never have a statewide transportation system without the city of Phoenix leading the way. So I'm most appreciative for you to take this up and to provide us this type of information in depth. And I know Marty even paid out his pocket, because he come to my group and spoke, and we had naysayers, so he bought the tickets and took them on a ride.
True.
And changed their mind.
Changed their mind.
Changed their mind.
One rider at a time.
Mm-hmm. Outstanding job.
Madam Chair, I'd like to reinforce what your concerns are, suggest that this commission, we are a commission, huh?
Yes.
Roy was right.
Well, we just promoted you.
Wow.
Or demoted you, I'm not sure which.
Okay. But here, here's the way one person views this. You know, if we, if we wait, I mean, my nirvana would be that we would have a comprehensive transportation plan statewide, to be honest with you, and that there would be ultimate cooperation in one or two or a few sources of funding. But I sort of lost that nirvana about five or six years ago, when I chaired the TIME Initiative, and we failed at getting adequate signatures. And then trying to reiterate and to reconstruct the statewide initiatives is very difficult, because we are set up with these jurisdictions, and they're motivated differently, even though we do have regional cooperation. So what I believe you're doing here is something of utmost importance, and that is, Phoenix is taking the leadership, which is going to cause the dynamic pressures that you and Rick and others just talked about, that ultimately is going to see a more significant investment in streets. I really do believe that. On the other hand, I would be really concerned if we left the vision and the funding for a 30-year program for the significant light rail and transit, sort of on the table or shifted. That is a Phoenix responsibility, as it relates to Phoenix. I appreciate Steve's comments, that solid recommendations, which I believe are going to be the substance. If you carry this forward to the council, and then you have the language written that was put on the ballot, then there's going to be solid, defensible, bondable language in that, to assure federal individuals, the federal decision-makers, plus those individuals I said I was going to name, but then Reed Butler stepped up. He puts his own money and his investors' money into a real economic benefit for our community, and specifically for our city. That is impressive, as a private sector guy, and I know you all are, that, that is impressive. And the policies that are established by these commission recommendations and your future actions, which I would hope that you would take today, honestly, and the council take in the near future, really do send a signal to the private sector, which is, which is real marvelous, and it takes this economic development idea that Walt talked about, and it translated it into real private sector investment. So I think we're on the right track, and I do think, notwithstanding your correct comments, that we'll get the streets funded as long as we put the pressure on all of the parties to say, hey, we, we need to get this right on a regional basis.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you to our committee slash commission members for your longstanding leadership on transportation, including at the city of Phoenix. Thank you to our staff who attended those 100-plus meetings. A lot of extra work for everyone to get out there, but I'm glad we did a long and involved process that included multiple ways for people to get involved. At the city, we've been trying to prioritize long-term planning, to look beyond our budget cycle and really think about the future. And we recently set some goals, looking at 20, or we've started the process of setting sustainability goals, looking to 2050 as a planning horizon. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on, one thing that I'm considering is, if we look at this transit tax to end in 2050, so it would be a 34-year timeframe, and if we could get your feedback on that, which would be consistent with some of the other planning we're doing at the city, and also nationally and internationally, people are looking to 2050 often.
Madam Chair, Councilman Gallego, yeah, I, I think it was mentioned that the recommendation for the tax in perpetuity, you know, was discussed, and it ultimately was embraced. Does two things. One, it's an interesting concept. It also is something that some people actually expressed, I think that Mary said it very well. There was actually an expression from the public, and there was an extensive response about, you know, they didn't quite understand the, you know, 20 years. Well, my view is this, as I was kidding, but not really, if you can't spell perpetuity, I'm not sure you can sell it in a campaign. And if I had anything to do with the camp...
Spell checks for Marty.
Yeah, because that's why we have spell checks for me. Yeah, because that's why we have spell checks from me. That's why I feel that it was responsible for the staff and for this commission to create an investment strategy that was 30 years. So that if you were to look at this as a 30-year investment strategy and offer that to the public, you would actually be putting, as Steve Banta said, a solid program forward to the public. With regard to sustainability, if you were talking financial sustainability, it's a 30-year program. If, by the way, you were talking about sustainability in an environmental sense, if that was part of the goal structure, which I understand it is, I'll tell you, there's a lot of things you can do. But as far as bang for the buck, to the extent that this alternative of transit generally and bus rapid, circulators, and then ultimately light rail, which is an electric system, is probably the biggest step, if you were actually to quantify it, as far as sustainability. A major city, we're either the fifth or the sixth. I believe we're the fifth largest city, but some of those critics are wrong about their population analysis. Even if we're the sixth, this is a huge step forward in sustainability from an environmental standpoint.
Wonderful.
If I could, Chairman Williams and Councilwoman Gago. We did also, Shannon Scatari, I'll point out in specifically, really helped us as we went along this to say, what is the city's master plan? What is the city's plan overall? Are we being consistent with where the city wants to go and not doing an outlier, if you will, that takes the city in a different direction than other planning efforts that you have underway have taken you?
And I think next month, later this month, at the Development Committee, we're going to be doing our general plan. And I've been talking to staff that we ought to reference this plan in our general plan so that people know this is really setting our vision for sustainability over... Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to address very specifically Councilwoman Gago's point. When we were doing planning as a staff and sort of gathering information for the committee, in our brains, we were gathering it for 2050 because in our, the way we think about it, the tax that we have today expires in 2020. So, you know, we laid out a 30-year plan. But as you think about it, if the voters approve this, this can go into effect sooner than waiting for 2020. In fact, I think that's really what the committee has intended. So your idea of 34 years instead of 30 probably makes sense from an alignment perspective. We wouldn't increase the, I don't know what you call it, the cash flow or the plan from what the committee had recommended unless the council decided they wanted to do something like that. But I think your idea is an interesting one because it is really the endpoint that we were anticipating. And it does align with the other goals. So we don't, there's nothing magic about the number 30 other than we would hate to go below that from a bonding perspective.
Wonderful.
And if I could add to that, Madam Chair, we have sort of modeled this out through 2050. So the numbers don't really change in terms of costs going up or additional taxes needed. I just want to make sure we understand that.
Thank you. Thank you. When we kicked off this commission slash committee, one of the things I mentioned was that I had a little, over a year ago, had a seizure and lost my driver's license for three months. And like some of your relatives, learned how important the transportation system was for those of us who didn't foresee health problems but really needed that system. And Sundays were rough. Even the 45-minute service is fabulous compared to where Phoenix used to be. But it was, for those of us who are occasionally running five minutes late if you miss the bus, it's a real time commitment. And then I also learned, there were holidays where I was working and it was a holiday for the system. So we've talked about improving frequency on Sundays. But could you speak to the holidays and if we might be able to, with this support, have a few more days that are not holiday service?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gago. Phoenix is part of the Valley Metro system. And so all of our days are actually set by the region. There has been considerable discussion about reducing the number of holidays. And primarily, that was done because we do have lower ridership in some routes on those holidays as well as a cost-saving measure, as we all saw our budgets impacted through the recession. But we have been working with Valley Metro and all the member cities on identifying a number of days that we might be recommending bringing back to regular service days. And this would provide the funding. That's part of it, is that identifying each city would need to be able to bring back up the level of funding for that holiday service that they're currently paying for holiday service. So if this is approved, that would be an operating source to fund those holidays back to regular service.
Great. And I was interested in one of the earlier comments about dial-a-ride, not pace, growing at inflation under this. Is that, could you address whether that is true?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gago, that's a really good question. When we put together that slide, our intent really was to show new service. But let me back up because we are federally required to provide service around our fixed route service. So any increases in our fixed route service then requires a change in our dial-a-ride. But what we were also looking for were additional enhancements to that. So in addition to what we normally do, we wanted to make sure that we were also making enhancements to our dial-a-ride. And that 20% number is the additional enhancements. So it does not cover what happens when we add a new route. That's automatically within our calculations, as you saw, expanded service and new routes.
Very good news for people who use dial-a-ride and very exciting.
Madam Chair, if I could just add to that quickly. Several of the commenters mentioned concern about how long it would take for some of these improvements to occur. And that again is why we looked at a 30-year horizon in terms of the financial plan here and the bondability because that allows you to bring more money forward and get projects built much more quickly. My experience is that when you ask voters to approve something, they pretty much expect dirt to be flying pretty quickly after that happens. And so that would be part of the front ending of this project, to the extent that we could do that, is get projects out sooner.
I agree with Councilwoman's comments on sort of extending into Glendale towards the stadium. So would Camelback, I think there's some uncertainty about how Glendale might fund that. Will Camelback Phase Two be the last of the light rail extensions in here to move forward?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gago. Looking at the cash flow model, we made assumptions on timing of some of these things in order to kind of build the financing and all that. You got to kind of make those assumptions of what project goes when. And Camelback Phase Two is one of the later ones in the plan for sure because there is uncertainty as far as if that alignment or something, alternate to that, you know, Glendale's had discussions of other paths to get out to Westgate. So there's that flexibility to adjust that as we go into the future.
And Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gago, I think you all also are aware that there are several lines that are already in the EIS process, in the environmental review process, et cetera. So some of those are for sure going to be ready to have dirt flying, as you will, well before a line that is planned. But we haven't done any analysis of the environmental issues yet. So Northwest Extension, South Phoenix, West. And even, you know, the Paradise Valley Mall line has been on the map for a long time.
That is a very important one.
Yeah, I imagine that a lot of those will beat out that last extension, which also will require Glendale.
I have the pleasure of representing some of our oldest neighborhoods. But many were built before sidewalks were as common as they are in newer neighborhoods today. And so that has prevented us from achieving complete streets in the way that some people in the neighborhoods would like. Would the complete streets elements, could we use that towards sidewalks?
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gago. The focus that we tried to do on this, on this plan that we're working with the commission, was to look at not only the transit corridors, but also look at the connectivity of the perpendicular corridors that come to those transit corridors and future ones as well as existing ones. So we would be looking at possibly between half a mile to three-quarters of a mile, maybe possibly even a mile away from those corridors to enhance not only the sidewalks, the pavement condition, street lights, converting those street lights from what we have right now, high-pressure sodium, to LED, more sustainable lights. So that was a focus that we tried to do as much as possible within those corridors.
Wonderful. That'll be good news for many people who've expressed interest in that area and also help us with our pothole problem that Councilwoman Williams has alluded to. Well, very exciting. We're very excited about the bus service expansions in Southwest Phoenix. That will also be very important along with South Central. So thank you all for your work on this.
Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would echo my colleagues' comments. This is without a doubt, and don't want this to go to everyone's heads, but this is without a doubt the most impressive commission that's been put together since I've been on the council. Secretary Peters, I was thrilled when the mayor told me that you were going to chair this commission. And I thank you so much for your service to our country, both to this state federally and to have you as part of this is just really amazing. So thank you for all your work. Marty, again, with your experience with transportation, we are so fortunate. And you brought so much to the table. And my predecessor on the city council, Councilwoman Byer, thank you for your service, along with several other former members of this council. Councilwoman Maddox, Councilwoman Simplot, Councilwoman Tribkin. So I just can't say enough about this group. And so since we have a lot of people who have been in elected office, they know that this is a long process and served, again, as cabinet secretary. There's, this is huge. This is a huge project. By far, I would argue, the most important thing that we've dealt with since I've been on this council. And so as a result, we can't rush into this thing. We need to fully vet this. And I know you all have. And now it's our chance to fully vet this. We spent a lot of time on the food tax since I've been here. Food tax is 2% on the purchases of food for use in people's homes. We're talking about a 0.4 or 0.35% increase on essentially all things sold in the city of Phoenix. So I think we all need to understand the gravity, and I think everyone does who is here. So getting to very basic, and we haven't talked about this. The reason we're here, I think, is because this tax comes to an end in 2020, right? And so that's the first, we need to act on that. To keep the light rail moving, to keep the buses away that they're, we have to act by 2020. And so this, by the way, I can't thank you enough for blowing this thing up because I could not, I'm getting my readers next week after the smaller version. But this is great. And so when we look at the top line, existing service, by my math, it's about $13 billion. Again, presumably, that's over 30 years.
Yes.
Right? So if we stayed at the current tax rate of 0.4, how much would that generate over 30 years?
Chair Williams, Councilman Gates. Basically, for each tenth of a cent, it generates over the third years about $2.4 billion. So three and a half times 2.4 would be the reduced amount from this plan. And basically, continuing the tax at the current level of the four tenths in the future, if all the currently planned light rail extensions are built, we would actually have to cut back somewhere on service, either lesser frequency or something on light rail or cut back on bus service in order to maintain that at the four tenths.
Okay, so again, just give me, a lot of numbers thrown around. What, how much would it generate for, to stay at 0.4 for 30 years?
0.4 would be, if I do the math, it would be just under $10 billion just the tax. Now, to clarify, the $30 billion in this plan is not just the tax. It's all the other funding sources. It's regional funds, it's federal funds, it's fares, it's all, you know. So the $30 billion cost is funded by a variety of funding sources.
Okay, so what's your estimate then on what the tax? Because I think that's what we ought to be talking about personally, is what will the tax generate? How much money do you estimate?
The tax would generate for the plan about $17.5 billion over 30 years.
Okay, so it would generate, so when you have this, for example, the $13 billion rough numbers in cost to retain the existing service, how much of the tax are you estimating that $13 billion is made up of?
I'm not sure if I follow you.
Well, if you're saying, okay.
Madam Chair, we've got a pie chart up here that Maria had prepared in case a question like this was asked. We try to anticipate.
Someone asked how much the tax was going to generate?
Yeah. I'll let you walk through what you got, Maria.
So Councilwoman Williams, Councilman Gates. What we did was we wanted to be able to show that the sales tax, if approved by our community, is just one piece. It is a very large piece of the transportation fund. But we wanted to show that all of the sources of funds that we expect, that we continue to get today and we anticipate getting in the future. So obviously, our transit fares are a good portion of that. FTA, we are, continue to anticipate they fund both on our bus system, but most importantly, on the capital side of our light rail system for any expansion. We are anticipating, we currently have the regional sales tax, which is Prop 400. We are anticipating that that would be continued when sometime before or when it expires in 2024, if I remember the right date.
Right.
And then, of course, we have bonding funds and other, which is, we get some funds from the federal government. We get state funds, et cetera. So this is the package over 30 years of sources of funds that we anticipate receiving.
Okay, so then I'll come back to my question, which was, if we're estimating that we need $13 billion to maintain the current service over the next 30 years, it looks to me like 40% of that would come from other sources than the sales tax. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, we need to come up with about 60% of $13 billion to keep the system running. Okay, so is it...
I'm thinking about how matches work.
Okay.
You know, it's not going to be the exact...
And if the answer is, I don't know the answer to your question, we need to go back, that's absolutely fine. What I'm trying to tease out of this whole thing is, what does it really cost? Not what are we, all these other things that may, you know, right? I have a degree in economics, and you look at constants. And the constant, there's a lot of variables out here. But let's figure out what we think this would generate, what we need and what this would generate, and then start to compare those. And then we can really figure out, hey, we want Northwest Extension. How much is it going to cost our voters? We want bus, we want whatever. Because right now, there's just a whole lot of stuff thrown in here together. And I guess for me, anyway, it's hard for me to kind of figure out exactly. And, you know, like the issues that the chairwoman raised with asphalt, you know, the issues with our asphalt and street, I mean, so.
So I think to answer the question, the pie chart would look slightly different if you have a lower sales tax because a lot of this money is matched from the federal government at a certain percentage. So it might not be exactly what you see here. And if you'd like us to create a, what if we simply maintained the existing system and didn't expand the system, what financing would that take roughly? We could create that pie chart for you, you know, based upon our best estimate of what kinds of funds would come forward.
I think that would be helpful for people to see. Or alternatively, if we kept the tax rate the same, this, these are the revenues that it would generate. And maybe if there was, because we have 0.4 and we have 0.75. We have current and we have nearly doubling it. So maybe another one in between to give us some options so that the council can, again, go through the process that you all got to go through and looking, you know, prioritizing and looking what, we may very well go through that whole process and come to the same conclusion that you did. But right now, we don't have that in front of us. Yeah, because this is, you know, this is one of my questions, too, is light rail. And I think you touched on it a bit, Rick, of light rail that we've built over the years. How much of it has been paid for with Transit 2000 funds? And how much has been federal match or matches from elsewhere or grants? To give us an idea, not that that necessarily reflects what's going to happen in the future, but at least give us some kind of a roadmap.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Councilman Gates. We do have, for the initial 20 miles, the total cost was $1.4 billion. We, the line, the 20 miles, received 52% federal funding for that system. And then each city... that system. And then, each city was required to identify their local share of the funds. In Phoenix, Ken, can you please refresh our memories on how that was funded?
Sure. Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, the Phoenix portion of it was roughly a little under $1 billion. And the, and I'm recalling off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the local Phoenix share, because there was some regional funding that went into that as well, for some of the regional assets, the Phoenix share was about 500 to 600 million of the T-2000 fund, as well as bond funds that we financed for that.
And Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, so, we did not assume going forward that 52% match for rail. The assumption is-
30%.
30%, is that correct? So, we understand that the federal government is not going to be in the place it was when we started this system. So, I want to assure you that our assumptions about federal match are more conservative, and I think more realistic going forward, because in that particular case, it's not a good choice to assume the past is going to be what the future looks like.
Can I make a comment on that? So, that was going to be one of my remarks. In one of the four agreements, you don't assume. And I'm hearing a lot of assumption. And I'm being cautious and conservative, the fact that 2007, we hit a point where we were all shocked, and to start predicting and planning, as we plan all the time, and then things hit us, and we adjust, then in 30 years, we're not guaranteed anything, and we're not going, we don't know what's going to be in 30 years. And so, we're assuming a lot, and I am wanting to be a little bit more conservative, so that when it happens, or if it doesn't happen, and we're there, and we're like, oh, wow, we can continue, and we can continue to build. But that's just my hesitant on this plan. It's a great plan. I want to thank you for all your efforts. And looking into these pieces, I do, in the talk transportation, I attended one, and I did have some concerns, because there weren't choices, as Mr. Gray said. It was very, I wanted to know, well, if I didn't really want to go this way, could it possibly be this way? What is the big picture that we're all looking at, and what are the choices do we have? I do represent neighborhoods, that their ridership is high, but also weren't necessarily represented, and in the sense of having some west side talk transportations, moving into some of those communities, and asking them. So, that's one of my, that's one of my areas. The other thing is infrastructure, because I also represent areas of historic homes, areas of infrastructure that is very old, that hasn't been replaced, and that if we are going to build multifamily use along the light rail, we have to have that infrastructure in order to be able to get water to those apartments or townhomes. And we have to be able to, our sewer system needs to be able to be, hold that demand, or be able to meet the demand, I guess, not hold it. So, this is a really big picture, an item that we are looking at, that we haven't really fully collectively been able to vet. And so, I thank everybody that was part of the committee, because I understand the big task, huge task that you had, and were able to get to this point. So, thank you very much. Secretary Peters, we all know that in the federal government, as we, as the future, I just happened to be at a transportation meeting yesterday evening, where the gentleman was talking about, we are not going to see, we're not going to receive the dollars we're used to receiving. We need to be very innovative, creative, and we really have to start the public-private conversation. And that's a big conversation that we really start to need, we need to start entertaining, and how they're included in these talks of what 30 years is going to look like. In addition to that, I'm hoping that we are talking to Glendale at this moment, and having those conversations, so that then we align along with Glendale. I know MAG does that, because I have sat on the county transportation advisory board, and on the county side, they're always planning, and we're always moving forward, and talking with MAG. And so, I'm hoping all these conversations are happening currently, and be able to then say, okay, here's our plan, what's your plan, how do we work collectively together as a region? So, thank you so much. There's a lot of expertise, and I appreciate all your work. Besides being a commissioner committee, I don't know the difference, but all I know is, in whatever commissioner committee you're working, so.
Just don't fall asleep or suffer.
And quick response to what you just said. I've been talking to Catherine Sorensen, who is our water, as well as John Traheal, and we have talked how it, we're turning down the silos, and as we build these streets, every department will be involved, so that as we are taking them forth, those replacements will happen, the upgrades will happen. When we talk complete street, it goes beyond what they've talked about, we're going under. So, I think that's extremely important. And then, secondly, I said next, the RPTA to the Glendale representative, be patient.
Madam Chair, let me also reassure you. You have an item on one of your future agendas, where we're coming in and talking about how we're changing some of our water and sewer infrastructure requirements to allow more flexibility to be able to do exactly what Councilwoman Pastor has been talking about. And I should say this, too, and I know Ed Zierker has mentioned this, too, either both privately and publicly, we have a new CIP task force that's very focused on particular areas that are targeted for economic development growth, so that we can make sure our CIP is well-aligned with your economic priorities that you've set. And in fact, Ray and I were just in a meeting yesterday discussing those exact issues, along with the Water Services Director and Milton Dehony, who's chairing that group, so.
Councilman Gates?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in addition to this, kind of the issue of the funding that I went through before, another thing is the timing of these projects. There's nothing, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in here that sets forth a suggestion from the commission on the timing or the priorities. Is that right?
Councilman Gates, that is not, however, the assumptions that were made about which projects would come in where, in order to build the overall estimate, is that not correct? So, you made some assumptions there that we absolutely should share with you, as well as sources and uses. That Marty and I just spoke, we should have had that on the table front and center, sources and uses.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I think Councilwoman Gallego mentioned Paradise Valley Mall extension might have been something I've mentioned a couple of times through my years here.
Is that kind of like metro?
Yeah, and metro, exactly. That's going to be a huge issue. I mean, again, we're having a wonderful sort of ivory tower discussion here, but I think, as Marty referenced, this can be an election, and that's going to become extremely important to the voters. When's this stuff going to happen, which one comes first, and all of that. So, to me, that's a huge issue that hasn't even been broached yet.
Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, can I just interject on that? We did not want to presume what the priorities, that the priorities would change. We currently have existing 18 miles of light rail, where you, as a body, have already approved light rail as the mode. We also work with Valley Metro and MAG on the Transit Lifecycle Program, and it's based on available funding. So, each of our light rail projects that has, that's on our system, including the Northeast Extension, is slotted based on available funding. If this is approved, then what we have done, and again, it's on a cash flow, making sure that we can fund the system, and that the funding makes sense, we know how many miles can be built within certain timeframes. We would be coming back to the council to really determine whether those corridors that are already on the Transit Lifecycle Program should be changing on the times. We would be able to build them sooner. And then, it's a question of, what are the priorities? Should they continue to be in the order that they're in? Should they come in, and should there be a different change in those priorities based on those? So, we did not presume to change any of those priorities, meaning this one first, that one second, that one third.
And I understand that, but, I mean, this council could say whatever they, this council can refer whatever they want to the ballot, including specifically, this one will be built for, or, for example, say, like in 2000, when we had a map that had specific alignments on it, Paradise Valley Mall was on there, and there are some others that are not on there, that were not on there, that have moved up. Just, you know, I think this is the time to have that discussion. I agree, there's been a process, we've gone. But that's the last time this issue went in front of the people. And I think some people may say, hey, wait, I voted in 2000 for something, and you're telling me it's still, you know, way back in line? We need to have that discussion. Or, we need to have a discussion now, because if not, the, there'll be a discussion in the election campaign when we can't weigh in on it as easily. So, I think that's an important issue. And if people decide to punt, that's fine, but I think that's a huge electoral calculation that needs to be considered by this body. All right, enough on that. Another thing that I'm interested in is the issue of, and I'm not, you know, you can come back to me with these answers, but the issue of fare recovery, that's something that's very important to a lot of my constituents. Light rail versus bus, and also the fact that, for those people who have, maybe these people who you took for the first ride on light rail, perhaps they were surprised that we basically have an honor system on light rail, if they've been on, you know, subways, other cities where you actually have to go through a turnstile, and you have to, you know, I think that's something that, again, when the voters are being asked to make a huge commitment, I'd like to see a discussion, analysis of that, what other cities do, both subway systems and light rail, and then how that relates, if it does, to the fare recovery. Again, this is a very complex calculation, it always is. Oh, look at this. It's like you guys were ready for this question. Are you reading my mind?
We didn't want to load the presentation with everything we know, but we wanted to make sure, because it would go on for hours, because these guys know a lot.
Absolutely.
But this is something we do have an answer for today, and Maria can address it, and perhaps Steve Banta also could address it after Maria does, so.
So, Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, I tried to anticipate any questions, and I obviously missed some, but we really, we really did try to think through what you might ask. Although this is a complicated chart, really, what we wanted to show was, and I don't know if this has a pointer on here or not, I always do the wrong thing. So, the circle, the yellowish circle that you see is kind of the sweet spot for fare recovery. And Phoenix, on our light rail system, is very efficient. So, we're at about 45%. Am I right, Steve? 45% fare recovery on our light rail fares, on our total operating costs. And a lot of that, what this chart shows is the fare recovery ratio and the operating cost. So, obviously, you want low operating cost, and you want high fare recovery. And this is a couple of years old, but really, what we try and do is make sure that we're balancing in. One of the things that we get questioned a lot is, you have an open system, you have a, you don't have to go through a turnstile to get through, to get on the train, and how do we compare with our peer systems on that? And light rail systems are, and I'll ask Steve to verify, but they're all open systems, so they're not the heavy rail, the MARTAs in Atlanta, the DC WAMADA, New York, are all controlled systems. Those are heavy rail systems, and they do require the turnstile. But in order to increase the accessibility, as well as the quickness of getting on the system, an open system tends to make it easier and faster, so that people can get where they need to go at an appropriate time. Part of our nice fare recovery also is due to a newer system. We're not an old legacy system. So, our costs, we're not replacing tracks yet, we're not replacing vehicles yet. So, we do see that reflected in our overall, overall operating costs.
So, just a question. So, this says recovery ratio, and it looks like it's under 30%. Just, I don't, maybe I'm misreading that?
It is.
It's 29.
So, 29, okay, so it's, looks like there's, St. Louis, is that a light rail?
Yes.
Yes.
Denver's light rail?
Yes.
Is Houston, is that a light rail? Okay, so those are all above ours, right? The fare box recovery ratio is higher for all those? Yep.
Maria did say this is two-year-old data. We just recently reported to the board, which Councilmember Williams sits on, we're over 41% fare box recovery for light rail. So, our numbers are improving as we go. Councilman, this is a very good question that you ask, and there is a perception out there, because we are a proof-of-payment system, there was a decision made years ago with all of these systems, that we really wanted this system to be a part of the streetscape. We want it to be accessible to everybody. We want it to blend into the city, particularly now that we're trying to reinvigorate our urban cores. So, those are decisions that are made far in advance, separate and distinct, from spending maybe a million dollars more a station, to what I would call harden it, or make it like a subway station, where you have turnstiles and gates for people to access the service. The other thing I'd like to mention to you is, we have gone through a transition in fare enforcement here in the valley. And if you remember, recently, we had a charter amendment before city council that was approved, that allowed us, as our contractor, to be able to engage with the customer, and actually issue citations, which is starting to pay dividends. The other thing that we recently did is, we hired a new director of safety and security that is really hitting the ground running. She has been able to engage with Allied Barton, she was, she is a retired Phoenix police officer, she has contacts through the city of Phoenix, Tempe, and Mesa. We are now organizing regional transit security meetings with the local police departments, and our, our security and fare enforcement folks, Allied Barton, to make sure that there's a consistent way in which we engage our customers. She's also enhanced the fare enforcement program to a point where now we have, we are going to introduce in March, electronic ticket devices, where you can issue a ticket electronically, that's recognized not only in the city of Phoenix, but the city of Tempe, and the city of Mesa courts. So, there's a consistency in how we do our fare enforcement. I will, I would, I would like to believe that if you're out there now, you will see more Valley Metro fare enforcement people on the system. These are paying great dividends. Allied Barton, our contractor, has changed their contract manager because of the accountability that our director in safety and security is holding with Allied Barton. So, I'd offer those comments for your consideration. I recognize the perception, but I do believe we're doing a really good job in combating that.
And Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, there is not a meeting that goes by of the management board on which I sit, and the bus management board on which Maria sits, and the RPTA, the two boards for bus and for rail, that this issue is not reported on, discussed, and prodded by all of the people who sit around the table on that. That is a major, major focus for everybody. And Steve knows so much, because we ask him questions at every meeting about this.
His performance is rated on.
Thank you.
And just, yeah, and just the final thing, just to follow up on what the chair mentioned earlier, the streets piece. This is not a question, this is a statement. From my calculation, and Mr. Dobellina can tell me if I'm wrong, but from what I heard earlier, this program, this $30 billion program includes $25 million for pavement overlays, additional, right? So, we're doing about $25 million now, $25 million additional for pavement overlays for 30 years. That will make about 15 constituents happy.
Yeah.
I mean, it is so, I mean, it is so woefully inadequate. Again, I get, you have so many different interests that are pulling, but I mean, if we charted the phone calls that we all get on, we want pavement overlay versus we want more light rail, wouldn't even be close. Thank you.
If I may, Councilman, Chair and Councilman Gates, the complete streets also includes a component of that, that I think is in addition to, if I'm, and Ray, please, tell me if that's incorrect, is in addition to the pavement overlays. So, where complete streets are implemented, those attributes will occur there as well. So, there's something more there.
Thank you for that clarification, but that would only be in connection with, we're going to do a complete streets project. No additional, just, hey, you know, the street out in front of my house looks like a war zone. Well, it's not in complete streets, and we've got $25 million for the whole city for 30 years.
Yours, too?
Yeah.
Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, a couple of things to note. It does have the component for major maintenance, but we also have other components for major transportation projects that- that are, that potentially are within the transit quarters or outside of the transit quarters. Also, we have mobility aspects to those, to those overall complete streets. So it's a variety of different things, and ultimately, we would be using, I think it was a recommendation of a transit and streets committee that would move forward and overview and provide an oversight of those elements that are going to be through that street improvements program.
When you say transit, does that include bus? So if you've got major bus routes, 35th Avenue, all the way down, that would include that? Okay. That's a little more comforting. Okay.
Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, I said, so that number does more than, you said more than double, even just that overlay number is more than double, but also, the $2.4 billion that's in this package over 30 years is more than double, the resources we know we have available. And unlike transit, which relied on that pie chart, streets, and you'll see this in, if we get to the later presentation, we may not, but the pie chart for streets has traditionally relied on some different sources of funding than the sales tax to fund those kinds of things. So, you know, the next bond program, again, AHR funds, capital construction funds. So I think the committee didn't see it as this sales tax needs to solve all of the streets problems, but rather, we want to really ramp up how much the sales tax does contribute to the streets, you know, contribute to fixing some of the streets problems. So before, when we did Transit 2000, there was just a little hair for, you know, bus space and some signal timing. This is a massive move forward, where, you know, not quite 10, just about 10 percent of the program is going to go to streets. It's a funding source we haven't really tapped before for streets. So it really is a big movement forward, even though I know it doesn't solve all the problems.
Madam Chair, can I, can I add to this, having been involved heavily in so many different bond issues over the years? It is unfortunate that the downturn in the economy, and frankly, the cycles of the economy, have not allowed Phoenix and many other communities to continue on a bond schedule that, for decades and decades, has served us very well. Part of our concerns about infrastructure, not just transportation infrastructure, but infrastructure generally, has to do with the fact that we haven't hit our marks on bond issues. And transportation is suffering in part because we haven't had a bond issue in transportation in a long time, too long. So what we try to do as a commission is create a balance. And I don't think that we have said enough, or maybe even been as effective as we need to be about this commission, the creation of a commission, an entity that would provide oversight for the transportation system generally, and transit, and streets specifically. Because what that does, in my opinion, is tries to have the big look at all sources and help this community balance our revenues and our uses of those revenues over a long period of time. I think that would be a real service to this mayor and council, and also to this community as part of this overall recommendation, because while I think this commission recommendation and the set of recommendations has done a lot, it can't be all things to all people. There are other processes here. The other thing is that I believe that the estimates that have been used are conservative. Compared to some of the estimates that have been used in prior exercises like this, are conservative. They also then realistically took into account the fact that, hey, in the future, we may have a downturn or recession. As Maria said, they didn't take into account the great recession that we just had. And the other thing is, with regard to federal funds, there is not a significant reliance, there still is a reliance on federal funds, but it is not as significant as, you know, it might have been if we were back in the old days. So I think there is a conservative view of that. So you've got the bond issues that need to be moved forward, you've got the conservative nature of the recommendation, the conservative nature of the estimates, conservative nature of the view of, of the federal funding. And one other thing, having been involved before 1985, and I can't believe time has passed, but we passed in 1985 what was Proposition 300, and then we did Proposition 420 years later. Well, that 20 years later was 2005. Man, okay, that expires in 2025, and we're already at 2015. So any reasonable prognosticator would say, it's almost time to begin thinking about the extension of that, if you want to really get down to the multiple details. Because right now, you're visionary enough to say, t 2020 years, 2020, let's go now, and seeing where we are and improving the situation well before 2020. So there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think that we, keeping track of it by creating some kind of entity that would help with that kind of oversight of multiple factors would be a pretty wise move.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to move this forward to the council, because we are under time constraints to get this on the ballot. Having said that, I think by the time it gets to council, we still have plenty of time to meet with people, to get more questions answered, so that we are very comfortable, because I think this committee's going to have to lead the council, because it is very complex. And we've been involved from the beginning. But I'm very concerned that if we don't move this at least forward, that we'll miss our timeframe and it won't make the ballot. And I, I would just say from my pers, can I?
No, I'm sorry, please.
I would accept the seven cents recommendation, except I would limit it to 30 years, and I would exclude number four.
Okay. I don't think anyone talked about when this is going to be on the ballot. So what are, what are we?
August.
Okay.
It's what we're hoping.
Yeah, I guess I, I, and it's 2020, right? That's when this tax runs out? Okay, it's 2015. I guess I don't see the same time pressures to, to have, I understand if you want to put this thing on the ballot in August, it creates these time pressures. I think I've asked basic questions, all due respect to everyone in the, involved in here, I asked basic questions that we don't have answers for. And I think if we go about doing this briefing in councilpeople's offices versus coming back to this committee, it's, it's not the right way to do it. I respect how everyone wants to move forward. If this train's moved in August, it's moved in August, but, I mean, I ask basic questions that we don't have answers for, because I think everyone thought, yep, they're just going to like the .75, let's move forward. I think we need to at least have a discussion of two other options. I would propose, be happy to meet in a special meeting to move this forward, but I sure would like to see a vetting of a couple other proposals to this subcommittee.
I, just to respond briefly to what you just said, one of the reasons that we are moving forward with this is, one, we are no longer eligible for certain grants and for federal funds, because we do not have a guaranteed income beyond 2020, and we have now reached that point. That's their cutoff. So we are very concerned about going forward, continuing the projects that are underway, and making sure that we are, can keep things operating in a good fashion. That's extremely important to us. So I think that's one of the reasons that we pushed to put this committee together in the beginning, to get this on the ballot this summer.
And I guess.
So it didn't cost more to have an extra election, it would be on with our election.
And I respect all that, and I think you and I share support for projects like the Metro Center project that I want to see move forward as well. August versus November, to me, though, it doesn't seem like it's that big of a difference. And the cost, if we're concerned about costs, I mean, the cost of an election versus a $30 billion program, I mean, it's just, I would usually be the first to say, let's save money on an election, but if we can get everything ready so that this can be fully vetted by the council for an August election, I'm fine with that. But I just, I have, I have questions about it.
And I think anticipation there wouldn't be a November election.
When does this need to go on to formal?
Madam Chair and Subcommittee members, and if you wanted to make an August election, the actual referral to the ballot and the, and the approval of the form of the ballot, those things need to happen late March to mid-April timeframe. So the actual, I'm talking about ballot language and approval of the ballot form, which, as you know, this year, there may be more than, more than just candidates on the ballot, because we've got expenditure limitation and some other items that are pending. So, so we wanted to get policy direction, you know, no later than early March, because we need to draft the actual language, that will get into much more detail about some, even some of the issues that you raised today. And so, so that's your deadline if you want to make August, it's sort of mid-April. If this, if the council doesn't give us some direction by early March, let's say, I'm talking about the full council, we will have a hard time making mid-April. And Maria, does that fit with the calendar that is in your brain as well? Yeah, we've talked about, we've got a whole bunch of items coming forward for potential ballot consideration, and, and they're all on that same deadline if you're going to refer them to August.
Okay, so we have a council meeting February 18th, and then our next one is March, I want to say, formal. So our next one is March 4th.
So, so what we anticipated, if the committee made a recommendation today, our plan was to have this presentation at the council policy session next week. Again, if the council's not ready to vote and give us actual direction next week, it could come back to a future policy session, or maybe to a formal meeting at that point for more specific direction. But really, we're, you know, it's hard to write up ballot language until you know what kind, you know, what direction you're, you're headed. So you do have this, this period, though, between now and mid-March, that, that, you know, could, could be for continued dialogue, either at the committee level or the council level, to give us that, that policy direction. But right now, our tentative schedule was to go forward. If you recommended moving forward today, we would go ahead and do a presentation to the full council next week, and, you know, clearly anticipating the possibility of additional questions that haven't even been, you know, raised here today. And so we wanted to build in time for the council also to be able to get, the full council to get their questions answered as well. So we're not, I don't want to rush anybody to any decisions, but we do have that, that challenging April deadline.
I have on my calendar, and I don't know if it's correct, February 24th, we have a Transportation Infrastructure Special Subcommittee?
So we're working on that, actually, which we have, we have, as you know, very full agendas for this committee, and we have, we scheduled that one specially to talk about solid waste, but at least one member of the committee's not going to be available that day, and I think we're going to have to reschedule that one as well.
We are.
But that one was going to be fully devoted to solid, a whole bunch of solid waste issues. And then you have a, your regular meeting is on the 25th as well, and it's got a full agenda, where we may slide the solid waste item to that. But, you know, it's, it's your pleasure, whatever you all decide to do in terms of having special meetings or that kind of thing. We could also, it would help us to know what you want us to bring back, though, if, if you're not going to act today, it would, it would definitely be helpful for us if you say, well, I'm just making this up, .75 is just too high, you know, come back with and consult the committee with, you know, your best recommendations at, you know, .5 or .6, or, you know, that sort of thing. Or research these changes. But if you just continue action, and we don't know what to bring back for you, I mean, we could certainly answer the questions that you've, you've raised, Councilman Gates, but, but we are on a tight timeframe if you want to hit August.
So, Madam Chair, I mean, to me, that, what, what I'd like to see most is, actually, exactly what Rick said, is a couple of different tax rates, what that would generate, stripping out all the other, well, here's, you know, other funding sources, let's talk about the tax at that, the revenues that would generate, and what we think could be completed, and, you know, I'd love to see some recommendations of priorities, but that may not, you know, happen for a variety of reasons. To me, that's even more important than where those meetings are held. I mean, I think that we can have a much, of just, you know, we can have a much better discussion in here than the full council, and I think everybody knows what I mean. I mean, I've just, this is so important. We're going to have people taking off and things going on, that here, we can really sit down and have this discussion. So that, I don't, you know, that's honestly, that's my concern, that's, the committee structure is supported by the mayor, and, you know, this is where we can really have these discussions that, that assist us in explaining this to the other members of the council. And so that's my concern, is that if we rushed, and I'm sorry to use rush, I don't mean to put it, but then we can't have this discussion, and then we just know all the different ways this thing may go, so.
Penny Williams, can you research and find a date where all four of us are available as soon as possible?
We can work some miracles.
And staff, you could bring back the answers to questions, and we can do this in depth? Okay?
I want to thank the committee for all their work. I do strongly believe we have to, within us, the subcommittee, get to the place of where we're going to get to. I am fully supportive of this and be able to answer these questions. I want it to get to formal, where it is, it's just, there will be a dialogue, not sure where, where it may go at times, if you watch our formals, but be able to get there and make sure that it's solid and it goes to the voters in a, in a, in a way that we have vetted it, thinking of everyone and all our needs. So, thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much. We truly appreciate it. So, I, because we are past our scheduled time, and I think we have other appointments, I know we have loaded agendas, but can we take the next two items and put them on our next regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We have public comment. I think Wal, Walter's still here?
He left.
Nope, he's back.
I saw him leave, too.
You tricked us, aren't you?
The meter, you got it? Yeah, the meter. Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I think, you know, there's one thing I think this subcommittee can do through the mayor or, or really through the council very easily, and that is change the method in which we do public meetings. The way we do public meetings is, is nothing set in concrete, there's no law, I don't believe. I think the present method, we've been using for about 35 years, President Reagan changed it through the Department of Transportation, where we put up posters and we, we don't even make a presentation. And we, and we have people there to talk, and we've got stenographers, and nobody knows, the only people who knows what's said is whoever looks at the, at the transcripts. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that gives for enough interaction among the people, and gives, doesn't give the city, or this county, or the state, and everybody uses this, MAG uses it, everybody uses it. And I'd really like to see where we go back to the old system, where you make a presentation and have open comments. And, you know, keep the board, they're good to, for orientation before the presentation starts. The sales tax, I, I remind you that we had the park sales tax, and, and that hasn't produced the revenue that, that it was supposed to produce. They say they've, they've put in recessions, but I question that. I guess that's all the time I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make this real brief. I have a few things that I like to, as, that I see that could be made as new standards. I was going to put together something for that, for streets and transit. My goal is to help you guys see things in my, through my eyes. There's different spots in the city. You guys were going to do a presentation on transit, so I'll forward that in now. Where you have bus stops that need to go in bef, as part of, that should be accelerated in. I know there's a bunch of spots where you put in new bus routes, and there is no bus, there's no, nothing. It's just a pull-in. That example is on the West Camelback route. And then maybe when you guys do put in a route, try to get the other cities to dedicate funding to help put in their bus stops. Currently, we have a problem with Glendale with nothing on their side of the street, on Camelback as an example. I'm going to forward my project about next ride signs to somebody in transit. Currently, we have posters on the light rail station. I have trouble seeing the numbers on those posters, because it's black on a light color. I'd like to see a standard change to where those match the same colors as, or size as the light, as the next ride signs. Where the next ride signs are basically just formatted into the paper, this similar, to make it easier for people like myself to be able to see the next ride signs. On the stations, they're at the right height now. There's a spot for it, but it is still hard to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have, well, how come I can't?
I just want to make a quick comment.
Oh, I didn't have a card for you?
I'm sorry. I didn't put it in a card. I apologize for that. I just want to quickly say that I support this big transit improvement project. I'm looking forward to action. And I understand the difficulty and coordination between the council and the committees and the actual employees and the workers throughout the city that actually make these things happen. So I understand that that's a very challenge, that's a very big challenge in the city of Phoenix. And again, I just want to encourage you to keep moving forward with all these projects and keep going. Make, I want to see action, because there's a lot of things that have been approved that haven't happened yet. So just make sure, make sure we get this stuff done. Thank you. I'm Haley Ritter, 4422 North 22nd Drive, Phoenix. Thank you.
Thanks. Future items beyond what we have? I mean, our plates stack to the ceiling.
Like 10.
Yeah, okay. In that case, we adjourn.